Chairman, when you're ready. All right, I want to welcome everybody to the May 7th meeting. It's 6:01. If I could call this meeting order and get approval of agenda this time.
Second.
Second, got it. All in favor, aye. Everybody stand, I'll do the invocation pledge. Uh-oh. Before we get going, I need to amend the agenda. With old business for zoning was...
Planning and zoning, old business.
Old... Planning and zoning, old business. Can we amend the agenda to cover it?
It's this first item on planning and zoning, the old business.
Old business. It was...
On page three.
Motion to approve the agenda for old business planning and zoning.
Second, on favor, aye. All right, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Shannon. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we can't thank you enough. Many blessings we've got in this room are plentiful. There's a lot of people with a lot of needs in this room. You know what those needs are. You know where our state, our country, and our county needs are. We lift them up. We ask that you be with this board as they make decisions based on the good of the people. We may not all agree, but at the end of the day, we're out here for the same reason, that's to please you. All this we pray, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we start planning and zoning, if anybody in this room is in opposition, you will get an opportunity to speak. Mr. Patrowski, you want to start on our planning and zoning?
Chairman, our first item this evening is a request by M. Rudell Cross. It's a request to rezone from Ag 1 to RR to the allow the creation of a 1.1 acre lot. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
And it's Mr. Cross?
Miss.
Ms. Cross. Ms. Cross, are you here tonight?
No.
Is there anyone...
Are you a spokesperson on Ms. Cross?
Yes, sir.
If you'll come up and introduce yourself and that way the board got any question.
My name is Joey Hershey. I live at 666 Damascus Church Road. That's Jason of Cross from there. The reason that Ms. Cross, my cousin, she promised her nephew that he... that she would give him a acre, I mean, 1.2 acres to build a house on. But now, yeah, I have changed. This was a long time ago. But then she... she wants to honor that... that, but y'all don't have to do 2 acres, but you say 1.1 acre. That's what it's all about, basically. I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Any questions for spokesperson Ms. Cross? Anyone here tonight in opposition to this request? Anyone? This is...
Yes. I made a visit out to this area and it looks good. Make a motion to approve the zoning request for Rudell Cross Damascus Church Road.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Vaughn. Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? As have it. Thank you, sir.
So, she can do it?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, item P1 on the agenda is a request by KC Construction Services, Inc. It's a request to rezone from R2 to R3 to allow a multifamily unit. Property is located at 107 Sun Valley Drive. Planning Commission has recommended denial of this request.
Is a representative here tonight? There we go. Who'd just introduce yourself that way?
Yeah, my name is Flex Cavoye. I'm the owner of KC Construction. Last planning and zoning meeting, they asked me to... I mean, they were not... or I did not give them enough answers they wanted, like for the parking and the plans. But now I managed to bring their plan. A gentleman there, the inspector, he came by. I mean, this house was banner, so boring. And what I do is, I didn't know that Jones County is different from Beep County, because I have something similar, what I want to do here, the same, something that we do in the making. But when he came to me saying, no, in Jones County, we don't permit that. So I buy a house and I did for travelers nurses or doctors, people who travel, like not kind of smell like AB and B, but mine is more like I attended to travelers nurses. So I showed him the plan and he told me I have to come through planning and zoning to rezone it. So that's why I'm here. Last time I came, they asked me for the parking and I told them that... or I'm telling you that, please, I ask you if you can allow me, I'll be able to provide the parking in front. And this is the plan.
Is this all one?
Yes, sir. So this is a house that I made a six-bedroom, 100% private. They're not sharing no bathroom. Each person has a personal bathroom. They're not sharing anything. And the living room, that's the only thing they can share. But inside the bedroom, there is a little cooked up. And as he told me, that you guys, if you permit me to do the code reapply, they will come in and they will tell me what I need to do to bring it to code on their side. But the first time, I need to ask you to allow me for that. Then they will tell me what I need to do about the code. So that's why I'm here. Please, I ask your understanding that because I already finished it, I divided it, and everything ready to go, waiting for this approval. I put the permits with him. He came several times, inspected it. So, but the final, it will be depends on you guys, please.
Any questions?
In Sun Valley, those are single-family dwellings and the only duplexes, I think, are across the street from your property. You converted this into what appears to be a boarding house. Now, my county attorney can reel me in. When I walked into this property months ago, I saw it and I was like, there's no way that this fits a single-family dwelling, the way it's set up. I don't think it's compliant with the neighborhood. So my concern is, when I see six bedrooms in what appears to be a 1,200 square foot home, what is really the intent?
It's not a six, I closed up the garage. So it's no longer 1,200 square foot. Where to be the garage and that, I added about 400 square foot, I think, because I closed that, where to be a garage into it.
So you... what you're saying is, is that single-family dwelling or is it a boarding house?
I'm not using, none of my... use them as a boarding house. I don't, because boarding house, that's where the people live and they share, but mine not. I only care for travelers nurses, not boarding houses.
I've never seen a travel nurse in like a 90 square foot room before, but might be a little different. I don't see the compliance with the neighborhood, personally speaking.
I mean, if you can come and show you the one already...
I've seen it. I've been in that house.
But it's not... they're not small rooms at all, because, you know, the bathroom's there and at least the room is... I mean, when you put a bed and a TV on the wall, they got enough room.
This reminds me of a house on, I think, Joycliff Circle, where a guy put in about six bedrooms and three kitchens, but you just have a smaller footprint. Again, that's a residential neighborhood, not designed for what you're trying to do.
But in front of me, the apartments, three of them.
Two units, they're duplexes, so two families, one side, one side, not six people in one unit. That is not the... that is not congruent with what is normal in that neighborhood. Motion to deny.
Second.
I got a motion to second. Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it.
Chairman, item P2 is a request by Michael Bonnetchuk. It's a request to rezone from RR to C2 to allow a picture framing gallery. It's located at 3227 Gray Highway. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
Mr. Bonnetchuk here tonight. Mr. Bonnetchuk, you here tonight? I don't see him. Anyone here tonight in opposition to this request? Come on. No, this ain't decided, Mr. Payne. I'll call you when we get there. All right, no problem. What's the... what's the board want to do?
Where is this property at?
It's the old... it's the old...
Oh, moisture control, okay.
Mortgage. He actually built, he's got a studio in Macon. He want to move it into Gray.
I make a motion to accept. Sorry.
Any more discussion? If none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Chairman, our final zoning item is a proposal by the Jones County Board of Commissioners to amend the Comprehensive Land Development Resolution to allow metal siding as a permitted use in the agricultural and the ROMH district and to allow it as a conditional use in the rest of the remaining residential districts. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this text change.
Okay. If we can, Mr. Terry, I've got you down. And then I'll call Mr. Payne. Ladies first, and then Mr. Payne, that... if you could, just introduce yourself.
My name is Cherry Denson and I live at 144 Altman Road, corner of Altman and Davis Roads.
Is that my phone?
I just have some comments. And my house sits up on a ridge and it's out in the open. And with climate change, and I don't want anybody telling me we don't have climate change, it's getting pounded by wind and rain and hail. And I've done repair work on the siding. And the shaker shingles are deteriorating, so I would like to replace them with something that's artificial, low maintenance, and looks good. Looks like a shingle should look. But I can't have any metal component in that replacement because of the old ordinance. So I would like to support an ordinance that does allow metal, shingles with metal components in the middle way and metal siding, because to have to replace the metal siding on my house would be a financial burden. And I'm sure a lot of other people would like to use metal siding on their houses. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Mr. Payne?
Essentially, I'm here to... Tom Payne, Hipwayside, Georgia. I'm here to say the same thing I said last time about metal, that we need an ASTM grade on the metal. We need to keep the metal... get metal on buildings here that is not going to do what most of the metal, especially red in this county, is doing. Many different shades of it, many different situations where it's fading, different manufacturers. And I will point out that about 20 years ago, every small home building, material selling company around the country put in milling machines to take flat metal and make up corrugated metal. Well, they buy the metal from wherever they can and wherever they want, whatever price they can get. There's no standard on it. I mean, you saw what happened to the roof of the Tri-Community Fire Department. I mean, that's about the worst here. You can go look at Ace today and look down there and see what they look like. And that's what these houses and stuff are going to look like 15, 20 years from now in all of Jones County. I mean, you're going to look around, they're going to be splotchy looking houses, because this metal will come from the cheapest source. It may have, may not have UV protective paint on it. There just... there are many different ways to make metal last. And I've got some in my yard out there that is leftover from a job from '82. And it's really nice, bright red. Y'all really need to think about the ASTMs and think about the future and think about what y'all are going to drive down the road in 15, 20 years, and look at and see on buildings at that time. That would... that's all, folks. But you're too need to fix a sound system. Now, are we working on that, Mr. Risner?
Yes.
Okay, well, the sound system is ridiculous here. I know nothing about the T-Splash that happened here. And as you cannot hear it, you... there's no sense that it's gone on this long without being fixed. It's practically useless. Thank you.
Anyone else here tonight in opposition to this? None?
Question for Tim. Do we have any standards on the metal or is that something we need to look at?
The building code does specify siding requirements. I could not cite the ASTM standard. It is not something that we traditionally check as part of our inspections of a dwelling.
That was going to be a follow-up question, because...
We can't hear you speaking up there.
I'll try to speak up. That was going to be a follow-up question about the siding, because I... you notice around Gray, about 25 years ago, and everybody remembers, Tri-County EMC built a new building. That building looks very nice still, because it was a higher-grade metal they used. Some of the other buildings in the area maybe have some issues with the color fading. I know I do on my office and I used a good contractor, but he used a poor quality material. The green has faded out to something undesirable now. And I'm having to... 10 years, it's gone. Tri-County's 25 years and it still looks great. So there is a big difference and we need to look at a higher standard, because longevity matters.
I was going to make that same comment. My parents' house is red roof metal and it's still red, beautiful red, versus what some of the fire stations' red roofs look like, too. So it's very much a difference in the grade of whatever was used.
What would you recommend to get there?
I'll do whatever the board directs me to do. We could start requiring documentation on the type of metal being used on all our projects.
Not I said the rabbit, but you know, I don't know... I understand ASTM as much as I can, right, from my engineering background, but I don't know that I want you to have to deal with that every single time.
Yeah.
And I don't know a minimum standard to make it applicable, and I also don't want to create an undue burden on someone building the house.
True.
If I've got a budget for $100,000, I think I should be able to build the best $100,000 house I can build.
I would say that the builder should provide him a documentation showing the ASTM that it meets the requirements that we have. No different than we would require, you know, the right size of pipe for the water line or size of...
Or electrical.
Yeah. Sorry, size panel for electrical.
The only thing... and again, it's all aesthetics, right, as opposed to wire sizing being a requirement for load, right? Heat loss gain and inductivity of electrical wiring. But if we're talking about my house is going to fade 25 years from now, I don't know that, again, that's something that we should require. I get it. I just don't know that I'm there.
I think if we have ASTM standards, we just require the builder to provide documentation showing it. It's just a piece of paper from the metal manufacturer. Put it in the packet with it.
We're going to start back over on the reading then, correct?
No, this would be just... I enforce the building code for Jones County and so I think if the board made a motion to make sure we're enforcing the standard from the building code for metal siding and metal roofing, then we would just apply whatever is in the code to that.
Okay. Y'all understand that? All right, who wants to try that motion?
I don't want the ASTM motion, so I'm going to let somebody else do that part.
I guess everybody's looking at you.
We need to make the proposal for... for the final amendment for the metal siding first, right?
Yes, and then...
And part of that motion be to...
Or you can make it as a second, like a separate motion.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. First motion to approve the amendment of the section CLDR as item number three.
Second. Got Commissioner Martin to second. Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, no.
Second motion, chairman, would be to ask the planning and zoning to enforce the ASTM standards on metal siding.
Yep. Go ahead.
I would just prefer that you make the motion to enforce whatever's required by the building code in regards to metal siding and metal roofing.
And the roofing? Whoa. Y'all doing roofing, too?
If it's metal roofing.
Okay.
I'll second Sam's motion.
The amended one was to...
You're going to amend it. You're amending what... are you going to...
I'm amending my motion, because before we get to second. Okay. My amended motion is to ask the planning and zoning to enforce whatever building code is applicable to metal siding and roofs.
And I got a second from Commissioner Wood. Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Four to one. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we move on. We've got board departments. We've got to reappoint Mr. Joey Carr to the Regional Advisory Council for DBHDD for three-year terms. I had opportunity to look at this. I entertain a motion to...
A motion to approve, chairman.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
As have it. All right, we look forward. Consider agenda approval minutes. We have a work session April 2nd, along with the work session on April 16th and a third Tuesday, April 16th. Y'all have the opportunity to review the minutes. I entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
As have it. All right. New business, cemetery update. Mr. Stroger?
You have been busy out there, haven't you? Oh, I've been busy. Yes, I have, for the past couple of months, actually. Coming back and forth to your community and it has been a delight, to be honest. Very fulfilling. Pitt Cemetery, County Cemetery, is a phenomenal place. Honestly, it's a depository of a lot of the history of your community, a lot of it. I found, as you can see on the report that I shared, I found 881 burials, all told. 881, you can see that there. Before I go with the report, though, I definitely need to say to the board that the team that you put together to help me facilitate my scanning, the ground penetrating radar and the GPS scanning that I was able to do could not have been done without different representatives of the Public Works Department, particularly Chuck Humphries. Chuck Humphries was there every day, even the days when I wasn't here. He was on site doing his work and the only time he really took off was when he had an experience with a brown recluse spider. Chuck now has a new nickname. We call him Spider-Man. He had to miss a few days because of that, but that was the only injury, I think, that we endured. Glenn Linderman was another person who was faithful, all the time to be there faithfully. And both of those gentlemen, along with quite a few others from Public Works, came and helped whenever they could. And also, I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for providing prisoners who moved a lot of topsoil, leaves and pine needles and sticks of... entire trees. It's amazing how much work they put in to the process to get me on site. And I want to thank them from the very beginning and commend them to you. They are excellent in what they did. I came in and the first time I came to site, I was there with Sean Wood and with Mr. Risner, sorry. I was there with them, walking through, and it was a jungle. And I was thinking, this is going to take months to be able to clear it out, but they were able to clear it out in record time. And because they were faithful to their task, I was able to get a real good collection. You can see the breakdown of the 881 burials. There were 202 burials that I discovered with ground penetrating radar. As you walk around, you didn't see any rocks on those burials. They were there, probably buried along the way. Some of them may had... may have had a rock in the day, noting the head or the foot or both. But the rocks had been moved, for whatever reason. So there were 202 unmarked burials that were found. I found 384 unknown burials. If you go out there to walk around, you must be careful. It's a dangerous place to walk, because there's a lot of graves that caved in, completely caved in. The casket probably decomposed as well, the body decomposed, and the grave completely collapsed. But still, it's amazing, this is something I don't see every cemetery, they still had a headstone and a footstone for more than 80% of those burials, even though they collapsed, which is amazing. Somebody along the past year, 150 years, I would guess, I think it would go back into the mid-1800s, somebody was paying attention. The burials have good sightlines, straight rows. The burials were carefully put in the ground. They were not haphazard. They're there with a lot of intent. And when you think about the length of the age of the cemetery and to have that much organization, that is phenomenal. It really is. 80% headstones and footstones. All they are are field rock, field stones, but they're unknown. I don't know who they are, but I do know that a person is there. There are 295 marked burials where you have ledgers primarily, some pillow markers, where you have names. And of those 295, there are 24 of those that are unreadable or have no markings on them at all, but I do know that there are people that are there. At that satellite image that you see there in front of you, I have GPR now, 667... six... I'm sorry, 6.67 acres total space, which remains, 3.85 acres remain in the cemetery to be scanned. But I wanted to come before you tonight with this preliminary report. All the data has been uploaded to my post processor and we should have you a web map within, I would say, a month, probably within a couple of weeks. Give us a little bit of extra time there. We'll have you a web map where you can type in a name and you'll see precisely where that person is buried. You hit another link and you'll see a picture of the monument where they're buried throughout the cemetery. 295 burials like that. But look at that map. You can see how that broken line with the arrow tip on it, that is a rough estimation of the property line between what you have as a cemetery and what the EPA has down to the landfill. You see where the cemetery is and there's a large outcropping of rock there, and that's fairly much right now just representative of where the rock is locating. There's a lot of rock on the northeast side of the cemetery. And there's good news, bad news there. Obviously, you can't do any internments there, but it's a perfect place. The setting would be a perfect place for either a scattering garden or columbariums for cremains. It's even got such a slope to it that it possibly could be an area where funerals could be done, where families could come in and there would be seating and maybe a place where a minister could come in and share remarks with a person deceased. The rock area couldn't be used for much else, but it'd be a perfect place. I mean... I mean, there are many assets that are there on that ground. As you can tell, the section there that I've noted as cemetery, that's where all the burials are. And you see five different areas, to the north, to the south, and also over to that EPA area, they're in red, a pinkish red. Those are speculative areas that I went into. Again, Chuck and Glenn and their crew cleared out enough space, there's altogether more than two acres of space that they cleared out for me, very well cleared it out and in record time, I might add, that I could go in there and see if there were any burials. We had a few people from our community who stepped up and said that there might be burials even under overland. So you see, I did an area out there by the right of way, I did two passes by the right of way to see if there are any burials out there, I found none. And you see those other two areas on what would be northwest of the cemetery part, I went in two other areas there speculating that there might be burials. I'm here to say with as much confidence as I could say from those five different areas where I speculated where there might be burials or not, I'm here to give you the good news that I believe the burials are all encapsulated inside the service road that essentially circles the cemetery. All of the burials are inside and that's good news for whatever you choose to do with the cemetery into the future. I would guess right now, there's probably about four acres of available space for future interments. And it's in good, I don't, I don't, haven't seen any type of speculation about whether or not the ground has rock or I don't know what's there in those areas that I haven't scanned yet, but I can imagine that someone either within the county or outside the county could expand the cemetery and have modern burials. I really think there's plenty of space for a return on investment for somebody if they wanted to go in there and do that. There's a lot of assets that are still left for the cemetery, for sure, for that whole acreage there, for the county. But other than that, I think that gives you a pretty good synopsis, preliminary synopsis of what I've discovered to date and I'm very open to any questions that you might have regarding what I've discovered.
So the area that you have done so far is in yellow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and to, and the pink areas are also speculative areas. To the south, to the north, and even one to the west. We did get permission to go into the EPA part, property before we did that.
Okay.
With the promise that we would do no digging, all we would do is clean up and I would scan with GPR. And two, you see out by the road, you see area there, I did scan around the pump, the water pipe that you see out there sticking up out by the road, I did scan around that to see a pipe. And I believe I did find the piping for that, but I didn't go any further than that. I did scan the road too, coming in parallel the landfill. I scanned that road along with all the roads around the cemetery.
And so the three point eight five acres which remains to be scanned, is that the sort of shaded, very light pink?
Yes, on the northwest and then south, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
And is it cleared where you're able to scan that or they...
No, they would have to be cleared, that all, it'd have to all be cleared out, all the way around. There are at the bottom, down near the DOT fencing area, there is rock down there on the south side of those areas that they scanned, which would indicate to me that there's more rock down there by the DOT, probably parallel the fence. But we had quite a few members of the community that would come by and look and see and I would try my best to answer any questions that they might have and even show how I was doing the ground penetrating radar. I found a few burials in the roadway, just a few, and I marked them and they'll be on the map as well.
And we'll need to mark them also, so, because right now we're driving over them.
Yes.
The day I visited, you said you're sitting on one of them and I'm going...
Yeah, there was one.
Uh-oh.
There was one unmarked burial, for whatever reason. And by the way, too, as I suspected when I went in there, those who came before us, they were careful to bury from west to east, the heads west, foot to the east, and that's theological from Jesus and His disciples would rise to meet Him in the eastern sky. And our fathers and mothers, they buried from west to east primarily throughout the cemetery. But there was one burial right there at the flat area at the top, there was one burial that was pointing north to south. And what's that all about? I don't know. Maybe they were just contrary, I don't know.
And it's in the road.
It's in the road. It's in the road.
It's in the road.
Yep. Yeah.
Well, I was very impressed, I don't mind telling you, and the job they did is phenomenal.
Oh, it really was. And I think, to be honest, Chair, Mr. Widener, I think it'd be great that the county focus on keeping it clear. Right now, you've done such a tremendous job of cleaning it out, but now I think there needs to be an agenda to keep, keep it like it is right now. If the county decides to develop it or if they want to make it presentable to somebody on the outside to come in and take it over, right now, it is an asset for this county. The history that is there is strong and it's amazing to me what some of the things I was able to find.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn? We definitely thank you very much.
Yes, sir. My honor, my honor. Thank you very much for the privilege.
Thank you.
All right.
Any questions about, let me ask this, give me an idea of what the board feels about the two areas that I did not completely scan. We've got to clean them out before I get in there. I'm at the place now where they, I've scanned everything that has been cleaned and now we need to know what we want to do as we move forward.
Would you clear strips to there to do some...
I did.
I mean, would you go even further? I mean, I'm looking for your recommendation.
That's the reason I did those speculative areas, the pink ones that are on your map there. I wanted, I asked Chuck if he would to open up plenty of area for me to go in to get a good sample of what might be in that part of the cemetery. And I didn't find a single burial in any of those five circles, not a single one. There was one on the bottom, right at the very bottom, right beside the road, there's a, there's a ledger there, so I'm thinking, okay, there's gonna be burials in there. No, the ledger, I think, was brought there and left there and it was broken there and I was able to scan through it and there was nobody there. I didn't see anybody there at all.
I know, I would like to see the whole area cleared and, and mapped appropriately.
Glad to do it.
I'm with Delon on that because you don't know. We, I know we did some speculative areas.
Right.
There could be some outside those speculative areas.
That's true, very well.
And I just want to cover the entire area, you know, as, as we approved, you know, several meetings ago.
Sure. That would not be a problem at all.
I'd hate to halfway do it.
Right. We gotta do it, if you're gonna do it, do it right.
And it does look great.
Right.
It changes that whole area there.
It could be developed into a very nice cemetery. It very, it could, and the historical part could go on the historical registry. And I would even recommend to you, and you know, take it for what it's worth right now, but I think the area from that, where that, that rock wall is in the center of the cemetery, all the way over to the service road to the south, there's a rock wall that has two burials on the inside of it. I think that, that needs to remain historic and no more burials, modern burials, I don't think need to be in there.
Yeah, the rock, the enclosure, that's the rock walls that sits up on the hill?
Yes.
Yes. It's right there at the center.
That's correct. And two, there could be service roads easily. We, they were, we were, I was able to show the men who were doing the clearing, the area where they could bring the service road down in there. What happens, and it happens at every cemetery, most of the burials are gonna be along the service road up high because funeral directors and families don't want to walk two hundred feet from that service road to bury an interment. So most of the time, they're gonna be up on the roadway and you, as you, if you'll go out there and look at the orange flags that are there now, you can see a very predominant, almost a line drawn beside that rock enclosure, up at the top of the hill, all the way south down to the service road, there's a lot of burials. And then to the right of that, there's some up near the road, which was an entrance road at one time, there's some up at the road, but below them, there's very few. There's a lot of open space down there, going to that rock field that I collected, a lot of burials. I mean, honestly, they could put probably seven to eight hundred burials just right there. But the area from the rock wall south down to the service road, I wouldn't recommend any more burials to go there, simply because it's, you know, there's unmarks there as well.
In your mapping, can you make a recommendation for that road or pathway?
I can, I sure could. I could do that. I could go through there and give you an idea of what's cleared. I went over it three or four times just to make sure there were no burials in that area. I think, to be honest, there was a, a service road there at one time, because there's no burials. You, it's right, it runs parallel right beside the rock field that I found, it runs right beside it.
Kind of like off of Overland Way?
Yes.
And comes in and turns and goes up the hill?
Yeah, I think you could come in off Cumslow Road and come in about twenty-five to fifty feet and then make a right turn and go right along, parallel the rock wall and all the way up and then circle back around. So it could easily be, it could be a place where funeral homes could service their families without any difficulty. It, it could be managed and made into a very nice place. It's got the topography and it's got the open spaces and up at the top, I don't know how the ground perks, but at the very top where you've got a water well now, in that area, it's flat. So you've got, you could put, you could put fifteen hundred burials up there if it's managed correctly with walk paths and everything to come through it. And you've got the road right there beside, I'm talking about on the north side, you could walk through it and that would be a great place for future interments. And even down on the south side of the service road, I'm a little concerned about it being a water, a watershed down there, but the whole time I was out there, we never had problems with that, but then we haven't had a lot of rain.
Yeah, and clear areas, I would say we need to do a hand job, not using equipment, but actually make sure that there's any, any graves there that we don't disturb it.
Right.
The whole reason for this is to make sure we protect the graves.
Right. And I was able to set them to, I was able to help Chuck after, we had been in there for about three weeks or so, I was able to give him clearance on service roads to be able to bring his little cart in there to be able to take leaves in and out and it made things go much quicker.
Any other questions from the board? Again, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. My pleasure. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Liz.
All right, we move to number two on the, on the bid award for the Haddock Playground, Mr. Burke.
How y'all doing today? Just wanted to go over how we got here. We received seventy-five thousand dollars during the last budget cycle to add some playground upgrades at Haddock Park. From there, we did a community survey to identify what the needs of the community were and what they would like to see in the additional playground equipment. We took that information and created an RFP and sent it out for bid. We received eight bids from eight very reputable companies. From that point, we scored the bids based on the number of elements, the timeline, it would take the complete company reputation and price. And based on that information and scoring, Play South seemed to come out on top on almost every single category, especially the number of elements that we want and the industry reputation. I received more positive feedback back from other recreation departments on them than I did any of the other vendors. And with all that being said, I'd like to recommend Play South for bid. Also, just so you know, on the price, all of the vendors came in right about the same price, within about five thousand dollars of each other, and the price for this one was seventy-five thousand, which is what our allocation was.
That's correct. You know, get one to close that way, nobody's leaving any money on the table, get no suspicion.
There was one that was actually a little bit less, but they delivered a lot less, so.
There was one that was much higher, but then they had a discounted kind of figure in there and they, it was, it's what it was, so.
Any questions for?
Is the grand total the seventy-five thousand?
Yes. Any questions for Burke?
This has got a lot of great different aspects for all different age groups, too. I like that.
Right. Lot of hard work.
And the top three things that the community requested were climbing structures, playground equipment for ages five to twelve, and benches, and this addresses all of those.
I wondered what, what the top three were.
Yep.
Because we had a good meeting that day.
Yep.
Right, we did.
Commissioner Wood, this is, this is your project.
Motion, motion to approve the Play South Playground in the amount of seventy-five thousand for the Haddock Playground.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kitchen, any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll just have it.
Thank y'all very much.
All right. Number three, there will not be any action on this, but I talked with Laura at the Regional Commission and she suggested that we have a work session to go over the Middle Georgia Regional Commission Ethics and Civility Resolution to, and they could be available if we so choose. It was a, it was something brought to us by the Regional Commission for us to consider and just get y'all's thoughts on it, if there's something you want to invite them here too and, and have a work session on.
That's fine, Chairman. I noticed it talks about GMA, is this something ACCG has adopted as well?
I don't, I, I know this, this Regional Commission was the one that brought it to our kitchen.
Yeah. But this, this is certified under GMA, so if it's not accepted by ACCG, I don't know if it would be certified.
We'll need to do that research, right.
Maybe bring it back up.
But yeah.
Make some research.
We can get a, just confirm that that is, yeah, I need a motion to postpone for a later date.
Motion to postpone to a later date.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll just have it, all right. Ms. Brody, we got the first reading of utility availability ordinance.
Thank you, Chairman. I pulled this together from a few other ordinances that I thought addressed our needs. There's actually three spots that need to be changed from city to county, but the purpose of this is to require new construction and commercial developments to obtain a utility availability statement from the county. This will ensure that the project has adequate capacity before a project just moves forward and we don't have the capacity to service it and infringe upon the other users that are currently on the system.
Any questions for Ms. Brody?
Something I have to do on all my projects in making.
Entertain a motion to, for the first read.
Motion to approve the first reading of utility availability ordinance, Chairman.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Wood, any more discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll just have it, any opposed? I'll just have it. Fire department update. Mr. Graham.
Hey, Van, how you doing? Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate you and board members. There was some questions a few weeks back, reference hiring and our full-time folks and part-time folks. I just want to give you a brief update of what's going on as of today, but I want to go all the way back to two, twenty twenty-two. In the fall of twenty twenty-two, the board approved a request by me to go out for a FEMA-sponsored grant, federal government, for Jones County Department of Fire Rescue to apply for assistance to firefighter grants or the SAFER grant, which is staffing for adequate fire and emergency services. We made application back in, in the, I think it was right, right around November, somewhere right around there, and we submitted before Christmas. We waited approximately over a year before we heard anything. Actually, it went over a little bit longer than we anticipated, but it always does with the federal government. In February twenty twenty-four, we finally got word back that, that we did not get the grant and that there were several, and matter of fact, there's, we don't know if anybody in the state of Georgia had received any SAFER grants for this year, for twenty twenty-four. Doesn't mean that we can't try again, because we, we will, I'm sure we will. I, I know that the folks that would be taking my place will be pursuing that. This is the reason why we, we applied for that grant back in twenty twenty-two, it was to save, what we, what I identified was that we needed some full-time people around the It didn't take a rocket scientist to figure that one out, we certainly needed the folks. But, and we were approved by the board of six hundred and four thousand dollars back in that time, I think it was between, it was the budget between twenty-two and twenty-three, somewhere in there. It's been a couple of years. But we had to put the brakes on, if, if you guys remember, I approached the board that we were, we either apply for the grant or take the six hundred and four thousand dollars and... the grant or take the six hundred and four thousand dollars and go ahead and spend it on nine new employees. That's all well and good. That would have saved us, if we got the grant, one point eight million dollars in three years' time. So it was worth waiting on. I just want to tell, just remind the board that we tried to save that much money in three years' time. And that's the reason why we didn't hire anybody at that given time. And it was approved by the board not to pursue the, the six hundred and four thousand dollars for employees versus wait to see what's going to happen with the grant. Now we still had our full, our part-time people, three people, nine hours a day, seven days a week during that time, which we had no coverage at night except for the volunteer personnel. So go back to this past February, we were notified that we did not get the grant. I came back to the board and asked what the board was wishes to go ahead and see if that six hundred and four thousand dollars was still waiting on us. And of course it was. And I think at that time, we were going to say, we were going to go ahead and go with the full-time folks, nine people, three people around the clock. In eight weeks' time, you may remind me on that, I think it was something around that, eight, eight or nine weeks, we got one person that applied for full-time work. Then we had another one come in and says, I'll take anything that has insurance. That's not what I'm looking for. So I came back to the board and I think more volunteers came back to the board and that's during the time that I was going to go ahead and thinking about retirement. I'm turning, fixing to turn sixty-six and it's time for me to retire this summer. So that's when the band of volunteers came before the board and as we stand right now, we have twenty-seven part-time people that are working. We have four people around the clock as we sit today. We started that May the first and it has worked very well. That's fire calls and EMS related calls, sick calls, medical calls, rec calls. We have been there one hundred percent.
What stations on?
The stations that will be sleeping at night will be Station Six, Station One, Station Five, and Station Two. That's River North, Highway forty-nine, Haddock, Green Settlement Road, and where am I figuring the other one at?
That's it.
That's it. That's it. We have placed bedrooms at the firehouses. They've got facilities to showers. It's working, working very well. I can honestly say in fifteen years' time that I have laid down at night and I, not, not being worryless, it's, it's a, it's a sign of, of comfort that I haven't had in fifteen years. And that is no joke, y'all, because if you, you hear a call comes in and you don't hear a volunteer going, what's the answer? You've got EMS unit rolling, but it may be thirty minutes, y'all. I've always been a big believer that if anybody picked up that phone and they needed help, by golly, they better get help from somebody from our department. Whether the ambulance is coming immediately, somebody needs to be rolling in a timely manner. And I'm open for any questions. I do want to say something about our roof, so after I finish that, that may be just in the comments at the end. Yes, sir, Sam?
So we have twenty-seven on staff now, part-time, four stations manned twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days.
Which was what our intent was. Actually, we thought we'd only get three stations, but now we've gotten four.
We snuck in the other, we snuck in the other one. I'm sorry.
Good job.
And it's actually in spots in the county where, I mean, you know, I'm on Highway forty-nine, but I'm at Baldwin County, so Haddock or Highway forty-nine can respond. And I like that, that you've got them strategically spaced out that two can respond at any part of Jones County and need each other.
We plan on dropping some more if we can, if we can get more funding. You know, next, our budgets, we're right around the corner from budget time. And, you know, this is only good. It's working. It's only been a short time, but it's, we had our first work in fire the second or third day on Hungerford Road at, what is it, Driscoll?
Three Hundred Block.
Yeah. It's Three Hundred Block. That's right.
Right. It's just past North Cross on the left.
Uh, we put a quick knock on that one. I had four units on the scene within six minutes. Four units. It works.
Can you get a chance, you know, just for historical purposes, can you post some previous response time with the number of personnel and then?
Yes, sir. What, what we've had the last couple of weeks is the Sheriff's Office has just changed over to a new server and it's, we're trying to get all the information that we can. And I, I wanted some good, good, hard numbers. We, all we know at this time is one hundred percent. And that says a lot right there. But I wanted some good, hard numbers, response times and this and that. I don't know what's happened to the server. They switched servers and some, few things with SSI has dropped, but it hasn't stopped dispatching. It hasn't stopped getting the information to our responders, anything like that. It's pulling the numbers that we need to, to address.
One more.
Yes, sir.
EMD?
EMD. I am a big pro, I, I, I believe in it because all of my hundred and sixty-six employees at the medical center, I take that back. All of the dispatchers that were in the dispatch center were certified EMDs. It works. Not in charge of the nine-one-one center. I'm sorry. Yes. It's well worth it. Well worth it.
How do we implement, even on a part-time basis, that process? Cause I know we authorized you some time ago to do that, so.
I don't know how to answer that.
Get some help.
It's the, the sheriff is in charge of nine-one-one center.
Right. But personnel, we definitely want to dispatch.
Or some part-time?
We, well, we talked, we, I know we authorized it. We didn't say part-time initially. I know we said EMD. This is a few months ago.
Right.
Um, if it's part-time because we can't afford full-time, we have some resources available, because that's going to help us with making sure we get people in.
Our budget's coming up and we can do what we want to do if we work hard at it. And it's either cutting something or something that we can do without. I'm talking. No, 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 no. You guys know what I'm talking about, guys. The, it, it's, it's a hard, hard thing to, to, because I don't, there's, I don't have anything to do with that funding for the nine-one-one center.
If, if we authorized it, right?
Yes, sir.
We fund it, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're asking you to help with the implementation of it.
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
I know exactly where to go to school.
That would probably be a work session, maybe to invite the sheriff, Chief Humphries, maybe dispatch coordinator, Ms. Mitchell.
It's a great idea.
It'd be a good idea. That way we can work out a timeline on implementing, putting it in place.
Y'all know that I can't do what I want to do.
It's a great, it's a great thing to have. I was emergency medical dispatcher when I was at the ambulance service to begin with. It's a great class and I think any nine-one-one operator would benefit from it.
I think, oh, shit.
Yes. Especially if our nine-one-one emergency medical calls don't get transferred on over to the medical center or to ambulance service.
Right.
Um, because that first, you know, my one and only save in CPR was a nine-one-one call coming to me as a dispatcher. So it does work.
Yes, it does work.
Let me get you off the hook real quick. Is it wiser to incentivize the additional credential for that as opposed to hiring somebody already with that designation?
It's a, it's a great plan.
It's, I, I think the, one hundred percent of the folks that are answering the phone should be certified.
That's the ten percent, right? For the, the raise, right? For getting that credential, right?
Eighty hours.
I'm just asking.
I'm sure it's quite a few hours.
Can we make an exception for that one? I'm okay with making an exception for that one, because that's emergency.
I think it was a forty-hour class.
It is. It was a forty hours. But there's an advanced part too.
Oh, yes.
If you want to go for that, that bad for a raise.
I think what's most important is getting, making sure that we dispatch the right people.
Right.
And not sending a fire truck when it doesn't need that, right? Or for people to a site.
Well, it's actually to give instructions exactly what to do.
Correct.
Until emergency services gets there.
To save someone's life.
Right. It's like taking a book and.
Check for this, look for this.
This, 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 this.
I remember telling the lady that I didn't care if her husband's arm was broke, get him on his back and start compressions. Yeah.
Commissioner Kitchens, you've been working on something. You want to share that or you ready?
Can you speak to the ambulance service?
Can I speak? Um, I actually invited him at the, from the council meeting last week. I've been a member of over fifteen years for the county and I actually invited the director, but I, I don't, I don't see anybody that's representing, but other than I'm retired from there, that's, that's all. And a lot of things have changed, to be honest.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
But if there's a question.
No, I think we'll, we'll probably get Bud or somebody to come talk to us.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Um, I actually met him for the first time. Very, very knowledgeable guy and is very interested in our county and what's going on.
He's done a lot in the last two or three months. Just so everybody knows real quick, around twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, when we were dealing with COVID, everybody knew that ambulance response times were horrible because every time they transported a patient, they had to clean the, the ambulances out. So our, we saw our response times just being outrageous. And we sat in here with the director at the time and voiced our opinion and didn't get the answers that we were looking for at that time. And so we voiced them a little louder. And then we got contacted by the, a new director of the ambulance services and said, I've looked at y'all's numbers and you're right. We need to do something. And so we started working together, it's been about a year and a half ago. And as of March first or April first.
March, wasn't it?
Yeah. So we have a, we have an ambulance service here that is twenty-four hours parked in Jones County. And then we have two alternating twelve-hour ambulances on the Joy Cliff Road area and the Haddock area.
That's correct.
So, and it has absolutely, from what I've seen, every call that I know about that needed an ambulance service has been amazing for the ambulance response time.
It's made a big difference. You know, I failed to say that and I didn't know that's what you wanted me to, to talk about. Yes, they're back. And they've, they've got a area that they stay here twenty-four seven. And, and when they go out on a call, you know, there's a, there's a pretty long turnaround time. You're talking hour and a half to two hours turnaround before that's going to take care of that patient, treat the patient, take them to the hospital they choose, and then get back in service and get back to, let's say, back in Jones County. So you're talking an hour and a half to two hours. Well, in between that time, you've got, just like you said, Baldwin County sitting at the line and you got Bibb County sitting at the line. So if there's more calls that come in, and typically they come in one or two in three times in ten minutes. And it happened today. It happened today. And a, a community had to respond on one. We had three in a row in like fifteen minutes. But it works. I didn't know that's what you needed, Sam. I'm sorry for that. Yes, that's, that's just as basic as could be right there. And that's the gospel right there. It's helping.
Any more questions for Don?
No. Thank you for the update, Don.
Yes, sir.
Emma Warrens wants to speak.
I don't know if you guys remember me from about three years ago, over this deal.
You're the reason we had that meeting.
Yes, sir. And I'm trying to figure out, I was trying to find out exactly what was going on, because I keep hearing stories of EMS taking forever to show up, Jones or County Fire not showing up in aid like I was told should have happened to my one nine-one-one call that I did. So I was trying to find out exactly what all was going on with that. Like the, the numbers and this showing up, the statistics part of it, because you guys said that nine months before I came, you guys had just had a thing. And then I was told a whole bunch of stuff and that you guys were going to have me do some, or be involved with some work parties and being invited and told when stuff was going on. And it's over three years now and I've not been invited or told or nothing.
I don't know about the invited or, or told, but I mean, all of our meetings are public, but we have been, we've been working on it since then. And, and I think it just gives us a good rundown that we have four stations that are manned twenty-four hours. Prior to, two years ago, we had no stations manned at all. We only had volunteers. And so now we have four stations manned twenty-four seven.
To my knowledge, those are just fire, though. Those aren't EMS.
They're fire rescue.
But they can't provide any medical.
Well, by law, we can't do anything about that. I mean, we can't provide, we're not med, we don't have a medical license to provide medical services from a fire truck. We, we have to wait on ambulance services for that.
They can do basic first aid.
So if it's, if it's a true nine-one.
Are they showing up to the calls to be the assisting like I was told was supposed to be happening? I was told that when I had my call, like I should have gotten a fire truck age there to support and whatever while the EMS was showing up. And I keep hearing stories of nobody showing up from the Jones County side of stuff while they wait for Navasian to show up.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure how to answer. I don't know what time your call was or, or any of that. I don't know if it was.
I'm not talking about just my call. I keep hearing all kinds of other stories of other calls where people are going without any kind of assistance from Jones County until making Navasian, the med, whatever it's called, shows up. And to my understanding that, that having all the ambulances on staff depends on how many trucks they actually have on staff. If they're short staff, we don't, to my understanding, don't get all three trucks stationed in this area.
So we have a twenty-four hour truck and two twelve-hour trucks.
So we have the twelve-hour, we have that all the time, even when the med is short, ambulances and workers, we still have all the.
If they're responding to a call, then we don't have it while they're responding to that call. But that's why we have in our governmental agreements with counties around this, with Beav County and Baldwin County, Monroe County.
To my understanding, Baldwin will not mutually aid to here.
They're now at, actually, Atrium also. Yes. They're no longer Grady.
Okay.
Right. And we should see a big difference now, since May first, we have four stations staffed.
Exactly.
One in Haddock, Station One, Station Five, and Station Six, River North. So we should see a big difference on some of these. I've seen some social media posts where maybe a call was missed, but we should see a big difference with these personnel on staff now. And that's important. That is important for the community.
Don, a quick question for you. How many of those firemen are also EMTs or paramedics?
The ones that are part-time are EMTs and above.
Okay. So yes, all of those are educated and in the medical field also.
First aid kits, defibrillators, oral airways.
That's all that we are legally able to do.
And we did not have that when, when your situation, when you came to us then. It was, my, my memory was more of a, an ambulance response problem. We didn't, we didn't have an ambulance response for, what, an hour?
I'm not exactly sure exactly what that was. It was over three and a half years ago now.
Yeah.
Um, but all I know is I was glad that my initial heart attack had happened in Baldwin County and not here. Yes.
And, and I think when you. And, and I think when you came to us, that was one of the things that made us look at our response times in general, when we started noticing that, due to COVID, we, we expected some longer times, but we also expected to have more ambulances. If one was tied up for two and a half hours instead of an hour, we expected another one, and we weren't getting that. So, that's what we started working on the ambulance side, which is totally different from, separate from the, um, first responders and the fire. And we've gotten all of this in the last two months, so that's what we're hoping for, that this makes a huge difference in, in our needs.
And the state of Georgia has also, um, been working very hard. ACCG's got a EMS, uh, committee that, in fact, Bud, that he was talking about earlier, is working real hard legislating for the increase in salaries for EMS providers, that, you know, these paramedics and EMS people are getting more salaries so that it will draw more people back into that field.
Okay, 'cause, so just so you guys do know, the reason I, I heard as to why nobody was applying for your full-time positions is because of the salary. There was supposedly no night differential, no weekend differential, no all that, because I know several people that would love to have a full-time fire job, full-time EMS job in this county, and they have to live elsewhere. Um, and there's also, one of the reasons I came to try to see what was going on, too, is because there was a, uh, wife to a fire, to one of the volunteer depart, people here that made a comment, I don't know who all did or did not see it, because I was asking, why not make it, you know, twenty-four, you know, like, normal full shift, and she's, her response was, "Well, because a lot of the volunteers here have jobs with pensions outside of this county, and they can only afford to do the part-time." Well, to me, that means you guys need to figure out what's going on with your pay and actually do the full-time positions according to what would bring people here and sustain some of your own people that already live here versus worrying about what your volunteers can or can't do. That would become to them to decide, "I want to move to Jones and have my career here, or I need to stay where I'm currently at." Because that's how it came off to me was, it was kind of being worked around to do, deal with what they can do around their other full-time jobs.
Sometimes the information you get is not always accurate.
Well, that's why I was letting you know while I was here, that that is how it came off, and, because I know of a lot of people that would like to.
We definitely appreciate you, and like I said, I just, we, we, I, I'd love to see you every, like I said, we need, we need input, and, uh, it, it helps us, just like Commissioner Kitchens said. There was a decision made when you came several years ago that we had a problem, Commissioner Kitchens, uh, uh, I tell him, he's done a great job of, of, talking to the right people, and.
I appreciate it. I really do.
And we've got the right people now, and, and it should, I mean, you, you heard, uh, Mr. Graham about the staffing. I mean, we've, we've done something this county's never done.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can move on to, uh, Ms. Wagner, you've got the Corporate Health Partners Wellness Program Renewal, which is E H G.
I need to move it, um, to tomorrow night's call meeting, if it was postponed.
Yeah, if we postpone for tomorrow night's call meeting.
Motion to postpone item number six, Health Partners Wellness Program Renewal till tomorrow night's call meeting, Chairman.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? None in favor, aye?
What is it? What time is it at? Four?
Four.
Four. Okay, and beer and wine licenses, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Wagner, we got you again. There, go with the mister.
Um, okay, so I have two share wine licenses from the same person. The, um, first one is for the forty-nine on Mark on Shirley Drive, and the second one is, um, the JC one stop on Joy Cliff Road. I reviewed the background information. I make, uh, the recommendations to approve both.
Motion to approve both.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? None in all favor, aye? Any, any oppose? As have it. All right, T-Splas project list and intergovernmental agreement. Mr., uh, Mr. Wood, you're the only one here. You're not prepared? Can you do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I provided a handout.
It's this one, Chairman. Chairman, this one.
Oh, got you. Thank you.
Okay, so on the handout, he broke out the, um, the projected collections for T-Splas to be seventeen million. The city portion at twenty-five percent would be the four million two hundred fifty thousand, and then it, uh, the county portion at seventy-five percent would be the twelve million seven hundred fifty thousand. So, he broke out the dirt road paving. When you listed four roads, um, that total would be the three million eight hundred twenty-five thousand, and then the resurfacing road for those ten that, um, the next ten on the list that y'all specified, he broke those out, that would be the three million and forty-seven thousand. On the Highway eighteen parking lot, um, we're still waiting for Tim to give the price on that one.
Now, any question for Ms. Wagner? Thank you for taking.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the T-Splas list and intergovernmental agreement.
All right, Commissioner Martin, motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Kitchens, any more discussion? None in all favor, aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? As have it. All right, uh, y'all like, uh, the resolution requesting Department of Revenue, we had a work session, uh, would y'all like to?
Chairman, I'll make a motion, we postpone this one. We have a, um, review coming in a couple of months based on our, um, work session, so.
All right, Ms. Gray. Second. None in all favor, aye?
Aye.
As have it. Mr. Wood, department head, you're hiding in the back. I let Bert follow you. Both y'all hiding in the back on me.
Good evening, Chairman. Board members, how y'all doing? Uh, just, just to give you a quick update, uh, I think, uh, Lynn did a good job with our cemetery update. Appreciate all the accolades and everything he gave, but hey, it's just these guys doing their, doing their job. They get focused on something and they stick with it until it's, and, and see it through, so, um, we've got a few things, uh, that's updated. We, we've updated our fuel, fueling system. We had a couple of days worth of kinks on that, but we finally got it now to where everybody can get fuel, even on the weekends, and so the, the new system is working out great. We got a good platform to be able to, to report from and, uh, and make sure we're, we're keeping track of all the, all the fueling that's going on, so. Uh, other than that, we're ready to, I guess, get back over there and start clearing again, but we're probably going to have to do it with some mechanized equipment, because we've got to get these guys back on in their original, doing their original task, because we're getting behind a little bit. Any ideas? I know we got some board members that are familiar with equipment, but.
You got a mower. I don't know if it will, uh, run on the front of that, you know, for the smaller stuff.
You got a high-flow skid steer?
We got a high-flow skid steer.
I got a camera that I can use, taking pictures of them, using whatever.
Under our supervision.
We, Jason and I discussed, uh.
I'll cheer you on. You got, you got this.
Jason and I discussed buying a, uh, a rotary, no, a, a drum-style mulching head for our.
Let somebody do it. Those are.
I'm gonna tell you right now, no, it would be moneyhead, unless Commissioner Wood wants to, you can't.
I was gonna say, you're better off to hire someone, because you're looking at two thousand dollars for a set of teeth. We're looking at sixty thousand dollar head plus a hundred thousand dollar machine to run it, and.
We could.
You're better off to hire for that small area. It's not something we use on a regular basis, because it takes somebody a while to learn how to run it, run it safely and efficiently.
We had three acres cleared in a few hours.
Yeah, and I don't, it doesn't do well around rocks. It gets very expensive very quick with rocks.
It's like, just about, about as bad as Commissioner Martin with a brand-new lawnmower, wondering why all his blades are gone.
I didn't even recognize him. His shade over there, the last, last post I saw, you had, you had it sticking out there. But yeah, hey, I appreciate, I appreciate all the support. Uh, you know, we've, we've kind of, we, we've kind of just been sticking with it, like I said, and, uh, getting it to the point to where, you know, now we're, we've got to get back out there, and these two guys that's been over there every day, we got to get them back to work.
Yep.
In the district, so, uh, I'll discuss it with Mr. Riesner, and we'll see about putting out an RFP to get that done.
I scared you on that, that T-Splas, didn't I? Didn't realize, Mr.
I apologize, I apologize.
No, 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 I, I should.
We work until five-thirty, and I, we had, we had some hot irons in the fire this afternoon, so I was a little late getting here. Thank you, Ms. Shannon.
She done, she did a good job, didn't she?
She did. Uh, also, I sent, uh, Mr. Riesner our monthly report from April, uh, if you get a chance to, uh, take a look at that. And if you got any questions on anything, that's got all our updates. It's short and sweet, it's a one-pager, so it's not going to bore you to death, but it, it highlights the, the, the main areas that we've been focusing on, so.
I do, real quickly, Mountain Springs Road, I know we were looking for that window. Are we any closer to seeing the window, because I see it'd be dry for a while.
If we can get Chuck away from that cemetery.
Okay.
That's, that's what we've been waiting on, but, uh, it's, the windows are, are there.
Okay.
Past couple of weeks have been pretty good, so.
Supposed to get a little rain in here tomorrow, I mean, Thursday and Friday.
And we plan on, to let you know, we plan on opening that up in half mile sections, so we're not, we don't have the whole road ripped up. We've got, we're right there next to the rock quarry, so, uh, if, if we have to haul some rock in there, but what we're going to do is try to, uh, reclaim the rock that's out there.
Okay, and I got stopped by one of my neighbors. I, I never advocate for my own road, but she stopped me and said, "We've got brown spots and hot potholes, so I'm just letting you know."
Okay.
Camp Joy Cliff Road.
Okay. I put a work order in, we'll get over tomorrow.
I never ever keep from my own road, just letting you know.
Uh, aside from that, the work orders have been, uh, we've been whittling those down quite a bit. Uh, we've had some pending work orders that, uh, I, I think we had done the work, but they weren't documented in the system, so we, we've gone through, and since we've hired some more office staff, we're, we're getting things done. We're going to be working on, uh, clearing out some records, uh, going by the records retention policy, so I'll be, Ms. Shannon, I'll be talking to you a lot, so.
All right, so I have a request, too. Had somebody comment about this speed breakers on Whittaker Road that have come back up again.
Again?
Yeah, just go check on those.
All right. While they're potholes, you might as well hit Whittaker Road, because that's terrible.
Yeah. We got a lot of those roads that are terrible with potholes, so. Y'all, appreciate y'all letting us buy as much.
John, you got any?
Asphalt mix as we.
While we're talking speed bumps, I'll add this in there. We've replaced some of the ones in downtown Haddock, near the park and a couple of streets nearby. But let's get the rest of them. There are some that where you can ride a bicycle and not hit anything. They're, they are missing sections. So, if we can just do the nice job that we did on some other areas.
I think we have, what, like, three of them?
Three or four are messed up, so if we could go ahead and take care of those, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Kitchens, you're next.
Well, let me tell you what I got. I got less calls than I've ever had about issues. I've got more people telling me that, um, in the short time you've been here, you've made a huge difference. Not only in the work being put out, but the work order system that we put in place and is, and is working. Uh, the response times, not just, "When are you going to get to my road?" but responding to the person to let them know that, "I hear you, I, I've got your problem on the list," and working on it, um, even from your staff. You know, it seems like we've got, uh, we've always had a great group of guys, and we've all had a good working relationship, the, the whole department has, but it, but it seems like, you know, they're, they're, they're behind you a hundred percent, and so, um, I just want to say kudos to you, not just for the, um, the cemetery part over there, because I know sometimes things don't show up, and, you know, when you're doing a side job a long time.
Yeah.
The other things don't show up until you realize, "Man, I should have got off that two weeks ago."
Yeah.
But, uh, I just want to say, I appreciate you. That's, uh, you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, I couldn't, I couldn't do anything without my staff. They're so, I mean, they're, they're so Johnny-on-the-spot with everything. Uh, you know, there's times when we have to redo things. Uh, we, we try things that don't quite work out, but we're learning from those mistakes as we go, so, uh, there's a lot of change that's, that's been happening. I told those guys when I first got there, I said, "I'm not going to flip it upside down for the first six months, I'm just going to assess everything," and, uh, Jerry back there, he'd probably disagree with me, because we made a few hundred changes the first couple of months, but we just, they were little subtle changes.
Jerry's happy.
He got a new truck out of the deal, so.
Yeah, he got a new truck and a new tractor.
Speaking of trucks, did you get all your trucks?
Yeah, we got all our trucks.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and, and support from you guys, uh, appreciate y'all being behind us a hundred percent, just as you are every department head. And I want, I want to just say thank you to Mr. Graham right there, because he's done a heck of a job for this county, I know, for fifteen years, and I think we're all going to miss him. I've only known him for a short time, but I miss him already and hadn't even walked out the door yet, and so.
That's a fact.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just text you those, the sweet ladies' phone numbers that want to have the grass cut in their, in the yard. They remind me every year. We appreciate you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'm starting back. Bert, you're next up.
Stuff back to follow there.
Yeah.
I'll echo y'all, though. Sean's been very helpful to us, and you'd be surprised how much we need a little help at the golf course or out at Liberty Park, moving something around, or even little things like he took his, uh, personal drone and met me out at the rec department to get some pictures the other day, so appreciate you, man, enjoy, enjoying working with you, and, uh, keep it on, keep it up, so. Uh, basically, we've been playing a lot of whack-a-mole lately, different things popping up over the last month that I'm sure y'all have heard of, between the fire at, uh, forty-nine, or, um, we had, uh, some vandalism at the golf course that you may have heard about, that, you know, we've been working closely with the Sheriff's Department to, you know, figure out who did that. We think we got some pretty strong leads, we're just trying to, um, get, get the evidence all together on that, and then we had irrigation out at the golf, golf course, which is tough this time of year. We had to bring in a diver, uh, from South Carolina to come, you know, get the pump unclogged and all that in the pond, so, um, but all those issues, you know, we're working towards resolutions, and things are looking good. Uh, some brighter news, we had our track team go compete in the state tournament, um, a couple of weeks back, and, uh, we finished in the top ten in the state for boys and girls, and that's out of about fifty teams, and we had three individual state champions. Uh, Ava McClendon, she won the standing long jump. Uh, Anderson Whiting won the javelin, and, uh, Travis Miller won the most coveted race in the state tournament, the hundred-meter dash. And so, he's already, Coach Chastain's already, he's a ninth, rising ninth grader, and Coach Chastain's, you know, licking his chops, already got him out there working with the, with the varsity for, uh, spring football, so. Yeah, we can bring them in next meeting, so.
Well, you know, we, we were planning on, if, if my coaches could stand up, please, back there. Mama, you gotta stand up, too, because, you know, you did it, too. Thank you. We're going to do a formal recognition next meeting. Um, they, they came to support us, but thank you. And Bert's not saying the other part, too. He shows up and supports us across the state. Um, rain or shine, he's there. Um, we're man in the stand in, in the, in the, in Baldwin County for the discus, and our tape measures broke, and all the, everything you can, not our stuff, their stuff, um, and he's still there helping us, making sure that it happens, so I appreciate it, and I thank you for your continued support.
And, you know, I want to just say, like, as far as the track community in general, you know, our fans, they're all outstanding. We, we're showing great sportsmanship at all times, and, you know, when you go to athletic events for all sports, that ain't always the case, so, you know, every time I've been on the road so far with Jones County people for any sport, you know, we've all been in our best behavior, so I've been, uh, proud of that, so. But things are good. You know, we're wrapping up baseball. We'll be hosting some Little League tournaments here coming up in the next, uh, month or so. We got something going on with pickleball about every other week. We got several golf tournaments on the slate. I know I put in y'all's packet today, a little spring update. Y'all can look over that when you get some time, but, um, things are good. My staff is, uh, doing an outstanding job, just like Sean said. We couldn't do anything without them, and, and it helps to be able to, you know, when I first got here, we had a hard time just, you know, having a full staff, but we're there now, and we're, seems like the retention rate is, uh, is going to be pretty high. Everybody seems pretty happy, and I think that, um, you know, the longer they're here, the more experience they get, and the better that they'll be even moving forward, so, but thank y'all for everything, and, uh, see y'all next time.
Thank you, man.
Mr. Tony? Nothing?
I do.
Oh, we couldn't.
Since we're talking about champions.
All right.
And, and Bert, I appreciate you, buddy. He's got a lot going on, but I want to say, uh, eighty-seven champions, and those are our volunteers and our part-timer people that are making this thing happen.
A big shout out to them, especially the volunteers. The, I agree with Mr. Payne. Mr. Payne? The metal, and, and I know we've gone through all this. I, I just, the, the, the fire station out on Green Settlement, we had to address that in a different way. Red roof, over twenty years old, it turned orange. It was a beautiful, beautiful red when it, when it first occurred and was put on and all that. Anyway, we had it repainted and it's holding. The other red roofs that we've got out there is probably not, I think there's five of them out there, four or five of them out there. But what we've done is, is I've put the, the red roofs on, on a annual pressure washing deal. So I've already had to do Station Eight, Station Two, Station Three. And it's, it's helping a little bit. It, I'm surprised that there's that much dust. But now, like Station Eight out there on Gray Highway is in the direct sunlight and it had eaten it up, but it's helping a little bit with, with the solvent we're using and, and stuff like that. So we've got that in the budget and that was a great idea about reassessing what we do and what color and this and that. And I, and I appreciate that, Ms. Payne. That's all I got. Thanks. I appreciate you.
Mr. Rizner, I was gonna let you know Shannon did a very good job for you, so.
Wonderful. I appreciate that very much. And thank y'all for letting me go do that. The sixth grade band concert was outstanding there at Gray Station. So I appreciate y'all letting me step away for that. So that's all I had.
Alright, about citizen comments. Any citizens will come up tonight?
I just wanna let everybody know, four H is going to state this early. We got their biggest team in the state.
Awesome. Is this for shotgun?
Shotgun.
Awesome. Wish y'all well.
We hope for a good, good turnout. Hope everybody busts twenty-five.
Amen.
For years and years. Going about seventeen years in my backfield and I think it's been probably that long where they're at now, hasn't it?
We've been out at the Fraziers for a pretty good while.
Yeah. When the bypass was, just before it being, was completed, they realized they couldn't shoot there anymore cause of fear of sprainer, of bypass with pellets. So Fraziers were nice to let them.
I've had three daughters go through it. Now grandson. And he's doing good.
I'm Micah Harley of four seventy-four, Stone Gables Court. I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Don Brown, and thank you for all your volunteers for all that you do. And also say thank you to Commissioner Kitchens for all that you've done in support of them and our four commissioners that have always been in support of our fire department. Thank you.
You got somebody behind you.
I do, but he didn't.
He just happened to didn't realize. He was getting ready, he was getting ready to pass you.
Okay, I'm, I'm Pastor Green, New to Mass Baptist Church. And one question, is this a Baptist minute or Methodist minute that I have?
Whatever you wanna term.
It better be Methodist, cause Baptist would be here to me.
First, I, I, I wanna say thank you for addressing, and, and it's, and it was, that night was a rough night. It was emotional, I think, Mr. Strozier?
Strozier.
Strozier. He was sitting beside me. He was very passionate about, before he got up to talk. And I'm glad we got somebody that was passionate about what he was doing. And I'm grateful for that. And we don't just come just to complain. And I wanna say, it's not personal, but it is personal, because this is not just history, but it's our story, our story, and Jones County's story. And I just wanna thank you that you, you addressed it. And hopefully then in the future that you would, you know, kinda keep us involved. And, cause I don't want us to come all the time in a way that we, we came then. My mom always said, when, you know, when somebody's wrong, tell them. But when somebody does something good, you tell them, you know, thank you. And I, and I think I speak for most of the people in, who were emotional that night, that we do think that you are doing something. I haven't been able to get there yet, but I hear so many great things about how it's been cleaned up and when we addressed it. And, and just one thing, just keep us, you know, just keep us in the loop. And keep the water going to the north side. I, I love him.
I ain't even got a jacket.
Going, going to the north, and we, we definitely need that, in this coming year. Let's, let us look at it, really, really, because it's, it's, it's getting bad. And hopefully one day at the church, we will, we're looking at building a gym facility. We're gonna need that water to, to house some of this pickleball and all these things. And get some of these children out of the, out of the street. We're, we're a serene type place there where it's nothing but country. And we could do a great service there as well. You know, just, but please keep it on your mind to do that as well. But we do thank you for the graveyard, cause I think they haven't exhale all the way. They kinda letting the air out, cause they're still watching. And I think we need to know that they are watching everything, because we need to not be like other counties, other states. We need to show some kind of togetherness. And this is one thing that I think there's a lot, a little of the areas come out and we, and we do appreciate what you do. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Quinte Hill. I'm an early childhood major. I'm an expert at child development and child behavior. My family's been in Jones County for like the last ten years. Great community, great place to raise kids, a safe community. But I haven't seen anybody paying attention to the three, the three threats that's across the border. It's not just at the border, but across the border. We got Bibb County on one side, we got Bowlin on the other side. And we have the young culture that's affecting our kids. And the culture is violence, gangs, drugs, prostitution, and destruction. We need to figure out a way where we can get these kids into one space so we can raise our own kids and not have the streets raising them or the culture raising them. If anybody who feel like their kids are not subjected to the culture, if you have a teenage child, check their phone. Check what they're looking at. And I guarantee you the music is reflecting what they're looking at. So I'm proposing a, a ten-year recreational splash or recreational tax so we can get a community center or recreation center built with a pool, agriculture and things, so kids can come there and we can have our hands on the kids instead of when the lights go out, then the street's doing, you know, you know what. I'm also asking, can we do something to lower the cost of recreational sports? For a parent with multiple children, it's hard to have multiple children into multiple sports if you're paying two, three hundred dollars for two, three kids. So I'm proposing, you know, a recreational splash or recreational splash, tax or, you know, something to help lower the sport, lower the cost of recreational sports in Jones County.
I agree with you completely. I work in the education field here too in Jones County, and I understand that. We don't set the price for the recreation departments. Each one of those are separately ran by their volunteers, so that, we understand. Many of them do have supporters though that do help pay for those families that can't afford. So they just need to ask that. You know, you know, if, if they've got four or five kids that in one household, they'll, there's help out there for them. Each one of those, I know I've sat on two of them and they've had that for people that need the help.
But for, for the average family, don't, that, that's not being promoted. But if, if they look on the website and they say, okay, seventy-five dollars per, per sport, then, you know, more people, I guess, yeah, more people will attend. And it'd help get kids out the street, you know? I don't know, but I'm pretty sure it's something that, you know, the county could do to help subsidize the, the price, to help cut the price down. And I know we're looking at, you know, the visual and the, the roof being a little bit lighter and stuff like that. But I think the fabric of our kids in the next ten years is more important. And if we don't do something about it, this stuff is gonna be a child's doorstep. So we need to invest now, because once they get out the box, it's hard to get back in.
I'm just curious, cause, and, and I appreciate you, Mr. Hill. You know, you came on and supported our program in an amazing way and brought your kids along. And he's running from field to field, right? So baseball kids, then the track kids. So I can only imagine the shuttle, cause I have five of my own. Yeah, I got five of my own and, and I remember trying to get there. I sat on boards just like Wendy and, and I know there is some subsidy available. Not everybody applies it indiscriminately. And, and all that means is, for the track team, we use it to subsidize the entry fees right across the board. We don't say, hey, Mr. Hill, you got five kids, so here's the discounted rate. We spread it out across all of the track meets for all of the teams, I mean, for all of the events. I know with football, they do it à la carte, per family, and I think baseball may do it the same way. In Bibb County, and I don't remember the fees, but I know they're way lower. And it's probably because Bibb County supports.
They had a voucher program that they would pay into.
They have a what?
A voucher program. They set aside so much money for, for recreation in Bibb. But they, they also have a, a whole lot different demographic, different poverty level. I mean, they're eighty-five, ninety percent.
Right.
More about saving the youth. If we look at Wanneroff, the same thing happened in Wanneroff. It was a, a great community and then all of a sudden y'all see what spilled over the borders. And every time you turn around, it's violence in Wanneroff right now. And right now in Jones County, it's, it's spilling over the border. Ain't nobody paying attention. But once it, like I said, once it get too far, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. And it's always the child that, that no one pays attention to or the child that, that is dismissed, is the one that, that affects our kids or the one that influenced our kids. So I think, you know, it, it's something that, you know, we need to, you know, pay attention to right now. Even if we do nothing right now or not, we need to pay attention to it. You know, I'm gonna take care of my kids, me personally, but everybody ain't in the same position. So I'm just speaking for the ones that, that's not.
Have you talked to any of the other boards just about how they implement or?
I just talked to all the boards about, about the splash proposal and all that, and all of them with it. Everybody said that they wanna do it. I haven't got in touch with the, the head of the football board, but everybody else is, is on board. And everybody wanna do something to help. And it's a lot of kids that I've seen that's unable to play sports, or they might play one sport, but they can't afford to play another sport, or their brother can't play this sport. And, you know, I think as a community, we can do better about including everybody. And it'll make for a better, a better, a better competition. And I think it'd help Jones County become a sports powerhouse if we have all the kids together up under right teaching and, um, a right culture. I think it'll, it'll work well for all the kids. Because at some point in time, you know, these kids go to this elementary, this elementary, this elementary. And then these two middle schools and then this one in high school, it's all gonna be jammed together. So if we do something now, instead of wait for later, I think it'd be a, a great thing for the community.
I got a question for Bert on this one. Is there any way that you could, could start like the officers from all the different sports that we have in Jones County and get them and start having like community meetings with them for recreation, so that we can kinda get them all on that same board together of, you know, where prices might need to be set and so it's not each individual. Cause I know eighteen is, I mean, forty-nine is cheaper than eighteen and all of that kinda stuff, so that can all be across the board.
Well, they're all, none of them right now are like making money. I mean, they're putting all the money back into the, the brokerage. But, you know, we are high compared to other counties that touch us. But some of the, most of the counties that touch us are subsidies and others and stuff like that.
Okay.
They are, they're not using volunteer organizations.
Would you mind taking a look at that? And then also, we had a youth advisory, youth sports advisory board at one point. I'm not sure if they're active now or not or it, it needs to be rebooted, but that's probably a worthy conversation to have. And if you do organize, I'm interested in, in participating to listen, to learn and see what we can do.
I'm shaking their heads from all those organizations.
I'll try to get, I'll definitely try to get at their, uh, meeting schedule sometime this summer.
Yes.
With representation for.
From each sport.
Each sport, and then maybe we can address some like local type issues like that.
Yes.
And then report back on what, you know, any concerns or finding some of these.
Can, just out of curiosity, I know, you know, I, I go to certain places and I think it's Walmart and some other places where we do that roundup, right? Is there an opportunity internally from a county golf course, wherever, to do that roundup and have that spirit change go into recreation? Is that an option?
It's an idea. It's definitely an idea.
Yep.
Be an internal move here.
Okay. Let's try and figure that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tri County does one, yes.
And they give away a scholarship for it, yeah.
I'm a little late with y'all comments. Y'all are well down the road with the part-time emergency management, but I really don't think that's a really great idea. I don't see how you can have the continuity back up to state and through, and whatever has to be done with federal, when you have rotating members coming in as, if I'm correct here, to run EMA emergency services.
I think you might be confused, EMA and emergency response. The firefighters are, are the part-time. EMA will be full-time.
Don's job.
Full-time.
That's what I'm talking about. That's gonna be full-time?
Yes, sir.
Alright, well then I would, okay, I.
We have someone in their interim right now.
Alright, well then I, never mind. But really, I, I'd really like to.
Sorry, I put that present, not pass it.
I'd really like to thank Don for his service and.
Appreciate that.
And the people beforehand. Y'all've done a really great job. And I was one of the co-founders of Tri-Community Volunteer Fire Department. I'm sure that's still what it says on the title.
I got a picture of it.
Title right there, cause the two ladies gave it to us. In, in any case, in any case, yeah, that was a really good turnout, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at my house. Five fire trucks, plenty of people and everything was great. So y'all have done well. We've done well. We do have a good fire department. Appreciate your service, because you're, you're one of the legacies that has got this where we're at. I said, "We appreciate your service," cause you, you, I mean, people like yourself and, and that stepped up and started these or why we're where we're at today. I gotta say, Tri-Community, that was just a really awesome, great bunch of people. And I, I gotta say one thing and the wife's gonna laugh. I can remember two women riding the tailboard of a truck all the way down to the lake down there for our, more practice and everything, and Mumu's flapping in the breeze. But they knew how to operate that pump. And one night we had a man, won't call his name, say, "Well, I just don't know about having women in the fire department. I don't think I wanna do it." And I think in unison, everybody in there said, "Well, there's the dope." And he never came back. I mean, we always had the women there, they would get Bessie Sweeta and Martha Pearl and all that. They would get the truck to the job, to the fire. Somebody would show up to hold the hose. I mean, it was primitive back then. Well, that brings back memory. We carried two air packs around with us for a year and a half and never used them because we had to go to make and fill them. And we thought, and we've had three fires in a day. And that was the thing. We were thinking, well, maybe something will happen during the night. We really need them. I need them now, but we really need them.
Put some more water on it.
I used them one time on a cotton mill. Juliet. Now you got them hanging on the wall and you got colors. Mr. Payne, I hope you'll come back. We sure have missed you over the year. Mr. Payne, I hope you'll come back, we sure have missed you over the year.
All right, anybody else tonight? All right, if y'all don't mind, the commissioners, uh, the chairman's gonna start commissioner comments tonight. Uh, I gotta add a boy and add a lady, or add a lady and whatever. Ms. Wong?
Yes.
I think you received an award, uh, weekend before last.
I did.
You've, uh, completed your core certification, you're now a certified county commissioner, but you've also started your, uh, specialty classes.
I have.
And, uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
'Cause we, you got recognized in Savannah, and, and, uh...
A beautiful plaque.
Got two guys standing with you.
Made it better.
Made it even better.
Yeah, whatever. Thank y'all.
How about a drum roll?
Right.
Mr. Overcheater, Cheever?
Overcheater.
Overcheater. Let me get my whistle wet.
There you go, get it right, chairman.
Commissioner Kitchen. Uh, is number twelve, am I correct?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Well, it was, you were two, twelve and thirteen together, so it was a tie for twelve, so we're gonna call twelve.
Okay.
Uh, twelfth commissioner in the state of Georgia to complete all of the specialty tracks. Took you, well, you got your core in ten months, the first year in office. And then since then, you have, you have taken and finished every single specialty course. And I'm trying to catch you, but I, you know, I got a good, a good excuse, but, uh, Shannon said, "I'll get there," but, uh, um, you got recognized for completing every single specialty track, uh, that the state offers. And you're now on the board to see what else we can offer that, uh, before we can continue our education. But congratulations.
Well, thank you, chairman. And, uh, he doesn't, he doesn't wanna tell us, he's kinda modest, but he also got an award, uh, didn't he?
It's all right, I won't catch you, don't worry, I got...
Your, your last, uh, he, he finished a specialty track as well, so, uh, he got a little, he got a little plaque and tag on his, he got a picture too. Don't let him tell you he didn't do anything.
Don, I got the sweetest, Don, I got the sweetest phone call Friday, Ms. Pounds.
Don was my wife.
He said, "Sweet."
Ms. Pounds called me, just as sweet as can be. And she just said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," and she couldn't brag, she kept bragging, kept bragging about the volunteers and how they showed up, and, and at her time of need and whatnot, since I think she had one family member had to go to hospital with some smoke, but, uh, shh, Mr. Tom was talking about the ladies, she was bragging about the ladies, you know, also along with the men that were side by side working on doing that fire. And she said, "It's just," she said, "It's unreal." She said, "The professionalism," she's like, like, "Wow." How, you know, it, it, what can I say but thank you? So, kudos for that. And, uh, everything that you and your volunteers have done for these communities is, uh, um, like I said, is priceless. Thank you. Mr. Bert? You and your staff, I told you it was coming. You and your staff are heroes in my granddaughter's eyes. Several weeks ago, uh, I was instructed by my wife and daughter to take my two granddaughters, go get them something to eat, and get them to the ballfield, so they could watch their brother, uh, play ball. We left our house and got to the traffic light in Gray. And about that time, my oldest granddaughter, who's five, screamed, "Grandbubba, look." Well, I'm, I'm looking for a car to hit us, I thought I had a backseat driver, I didn't know what's going on. So I looked in the back, and her eyes were wide open, and she said, "Look, look at the flag, the American flag." And let me tell you something, from the time we left that traffic light, she told me about her teacher, how her teacher had taught her about the American flag. Jerry, I saw you tear up, I'm gonna have problems too. Uh, she got to tell me about everything there was about the American flag, what it meant, what it meant to honor that. And before we made it to Dairy Queen, and she didn't get this from her granddaddy, she started singing, "God Bless America." And buddy, I lost it. And she didn't get her singing ability from me, I promise you, but I'm gonna tell you something, you talk about it, that five-year-old just melted my heart, and didn't miss a beat. And her little two-year-old sister's sitting there going, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, yeah," wanting to get a, a word in. Well, we went to Dairy Queen, we had a little bit of supper and a whole lot of ice cream, that's great grandbabas do. And we got back in the car on the way to the, the wreck complex, my two-year-old granddaughter kept telling me, "The, the flag was broke at the potty." She tell me, and she's baby talk, so I'm sitting there listening, okay. I kept looking at her sister, "What did she say?" She said, "The, uh, flag was broke at the potty." So we get to the wreck complex, got both my daughters out of the truck, and they both grabbed me by, one in each hand, and here we go, straight to the concession stand. We got closer and closer, so the two-year-old done decided, big sister got to talk too much, so she was gonna be the first one to show me that broke flag. Bird, I sent you a video of my two-year-old running to the, to the concession stand with one hand on one hip, my finger, I said, "Grandbubba, fix it. The flag is broken." Well, the flag was torn. But, uh, man, um, I can't praise the teachers enough in this country that teach the fundamentals of the flag and how we respect it. They told me about the, "In God we trust" on the penny, and what that meant. They're doing scripture. You know what I'm scared of? You know, they're so eager to learn. We've got so many half-truths and lies. We got people who hide behind masks to deceive our, deceive our young people in our community. I hope if my granddaughters ever get to that position, that somebody tries to deceive them, that, that teacher's available. I hope she's there, or he there, that can, uh, say, "Baby, that's not right, and it's not the truth. These people are hiding behind a mask." They came out, they come out and take the mask off, and they play a victim. I hope my, a teacher's there to tell them that this isn't right, these people are, are being bad. And, uh, I praise those teachers, and I hope they're there. Jerry, it's hard to do this without crying. Get me about it, I saw you. When you have grandbabies, if I could've started with, with grandbabies first, buddy, everybody keeps telling me, "You had grandbabies first, you wouldn't, you, you, you start with them first." But hey, I love my grandbabies, and, uh, and they, they steal your heart, but, uh, your staff's a hero. And, uh, I got to tell you too, you sent me that picture of O'Glory. I had to show my granddaughters that O'Glory picture. I said, "Look, baby, Mr. Bert and his staff, they, they, uh, they fixed O'Glory." My five-year-old said, "To let you know, that wasn't O'Glory, that was the American flag." So, thank y'all. Ms. Wendy?
Um, so, last Saturday was a covenant day for me, because it was our scheduled, um, community pickup day and clean community, and I'm out there cleaning and picking up trash in the rain, and about nine o'clock, somebody finally lets me know they've canceled it. I had a truckload of trash. So, I had people calling me wanting to know where the people were at to get the tires in. So I finally called somebody, and of course, I called Peewee, or Jerry, I don't know who knows him as Jerry, but I know him as Peewee. So, I wanna thank Sarah, and Peewee, and Tiffany, and Haley, and Jonathan, for showing back up and opening the gates, and taking in all of the tires that were brought in, even though we had canceled the trash pickup. And I did go take my seventeen bags of trash and throw in, so I'm still the winner. Yeah, how many tires did we take in?
We got an anger pole, and you left out Britton with his poach.
Oh, that's right, he came up when we was gossiping and all, yeah, okay. Yes.
You got three more, put it in there today.
Just so y'all know what she said, how many'd you say, seventeen?
I had seventeen bags myself.
All right.
Yeah.
Second place.
Ha, ha, whatever. All right, so that's my first thing. Bert, my dad said, "When you find out who messed up the golf course, just call the senior members to come help take care of them, they'd put them to work." Okay, they'd make sure everything that needs to be taken care of was taken care of. Um, I wish Mr. Hill was here, because no lie, one of my dreams that I've always said, if I ever play it, to win it though, okay? So that's a, a bad thing, I don't ever hardly play it. One of the things that I would do for Jones County, and Jones County's youth, because it was so important to me growing up, and that was our community involvement of what youth sports did for me and my family. Um, I would build a YMCA for this community. Um, and, and just because I know it's not just for the youth, but the, the senior citizens can use it, and seeing those facilities in actions in communities is unbelievable. I wish that I would win it tomorrow, because my children even know that I've always said I would build a YMCA for this community. So, if I ever, y'all remind me, if you ever see me in public, say, "Hey, go buy a lottery ticket," 'cause it might be that lucky day, okay? Um, Don, love you, man. We worked together many, many years before Jones County. You're my first call whenever I hear a sirens, and you know I'm gonna miss that. But I'm sure that you'll give me the phone number of who I need to call next, right?
Absolutely.
So, I appreciate you. Um, went from wearing opposite uniforms at different ambulance services to you being here to, in many crises in our family, so thank you.
I just had my forty-seventh year, and then I just read up my paramedic, forty-seven.
What's your number?
Four, four, three.
I can still remember my EMT one, too.
I can too, nine, six, oh, six.
Twenty-one, three, sixty-one. That's all.
On next? Sure, sorry. Um, real quickly, I, I wanna thank the tax assessor for coming to the meeting and sharing, um, I don't know, I, I can't call it triplicate, because it's not triplicate, but he provided us with at least this much documentation about why we're, where we're at, um, and hopefully how to resolve, uh, some of the concerns that people have. I think we have a responsibility as a community, as the chairman said, to, to find out the truth. Um, and, and it's good when we can hear from people who are doing the work. Um, so I appreciate that, I understand, it, it's not an easy job, I don't want your job. Um, when I taught high school, my kids said, "Why don't you teach in Jones County?" I said, "I will never, ever work in Jones County." The people here rough, uh, and you catch it, dude. Um, and, and I couldn't imagine, you know, when I retire, not working in Jones County. Don't get me wrong, for all that you, all you guys that do, I appreciate you, 'cause y'all catch it, and y'all do a really good job of, 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 of managing through it. Um, but this is one of those things that affects a lot of us. For those that did not attend the meeting, please go back and watch it on YouTube, all of our mov, all of our movies, all of our meetings, sometimes feels like a movie, um, are publicized, you look up Jones County Commissioners on YouTube, and you can view the, the meeting. You can also learn the truth about what we actually said, as opposed to what somebody said we said or thought we said, and misinterpreted and passed it along in the community. Um, so that's important for y'all to understand that. The cemetery, I'm, I'm happy where it is, 'cause to your point, uh, past it, it was, it was a scary thing, um, to hear what had happened, but I understand the why, and I'm happy about the resolution. This is much better than where we started. Um, Jason caught it from making some choices, maybe, along with, with Sean, about how to move forward, with, again, some information that they had received about people burying people in the wrong places and using the cemetery inappropriately. And the resultant, uh, is a much better place, uh, for the story and history of Jones County. Um, so stay involved and stay committed with that. Um, historically, we used to have committees for every, um, department here, and, and that went away, um, when, when the chairman came along, and, and some things are, are different. I think you should consider bringing those back to get the community involved with the day-to-day, or bi-weekly things that the, the county departments do, so we can keep people abreast. Three years ago, I remember that incident, and I remember being upset about it. I remember some activation, and, and Sam attended some meetings. I remember some ambulatory, um, commentary about why we couldn't have ambulances, more ambulances in our county, and I'm thankful for the response and the work. But I think, again, the, the community should be a part of the open committees, um, from the fire department, finance, human resource, and so on, so they know what's going on, and so you can stay involved from day one. Um, because then some of these things don't happen, right, where you get shut out of a cemetery, um, or you don't get an ambulance response when you need it, or you don't know what Public Works is doing, and so on. So, that needs to be brought, brought back, so people can be engaged. Um, and then I'm just, again, I, I wanna praise my track team, they, they did an amazing thing, I know we're gonna do it officially in a meeting, but, um, my dad ended up with cancer, and I had to go, and they stepped up, and they did a phenomenal job. Um, it takes a village, and, and I couldn't have imagined, um, having any different result, but I'm hap, I'm happy that I had different people step up, 'cause I didn't know the hidden gems that were present on the team to make it happen. Um, and, and I got fussed out by my commissioners, and I'm just, I'm a private person, but I'm gonna share this. That very same week, I ended up in the hospital with a TIA, and if it wasn't for a parent who was a paramedic who told me to go to the hospital, with my hundred and seventy-seven, blood pressure over one hundred, I might not be here having that conversation. And four days later, my dad tells me he has cancer. So I'm going, "Oh, are you serious?", like, I got my own stuff to do. Um, so I apologize, but I'm private, it's just, it is what it is, if you break bread with me, you'll know more. Um, to my family that prayed for me, I appreciate y'all, to my track team that stood up, I thank you, um, because I don't know that it would be the way it is today if that parent wasn't there and you guys weren't here. So thank you, and I thank God for his presence and his work. Everybody keep doing what we need to do in Jones County, it'll, it'll work out. To my, to my stars of the old, Ms. Terry Denson, uh, Mr. Tom Payne, they were here during my first term, some twelve years ago, helping to make this county better by being involved, being engaged, I thank you, I appreciate you all, um, 'cause I didn't have a clue about what was going on, and you guys helped me understand a lot more. It takes a village, um, and I appreciate the village of Jones County. Thank y'all.
The village to raise a commissioner.
Want to help a commissioner, without question, so I thank you guys, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
All right. Thank you, many good points, Wendy did a day line on various items tonight. I knew early on, when Ms. Gladys called me, we had to get the cemetery fixed. And I told her, "I can't fix it myself, it's gonna take the rest of the board of commissioners working together to fix this problem." And I started thinking immediately, who is, do we need to call? And I remembered back to a cemetery in West Georgia that I had visited, sat through a presentation, Lynn Strozier did that presentation at the Flat Shoals Cemetery in LaGrange, Georgia. And I knew he was the man for the job, because I'd seen the plats that'll be finished and presented to Jones County, and they're important. And I've attended funerals in that cemetery since that presentation, many years ago. Um, it's a work in progress, and I appreciate the citizens come forward, made their voices heard, and the commissioners listening, and making things happen, and the staff of Public Works and the Sheriff's Department, the inmates, all the unknowns, all the people I can't even name, 'cause I don't know all their names, but I appreciate them coming forward and taking care of that. To the fire department, it's a long time coming, and I'm glad to see full-time people, 'cause I listen to the radio, I carry a radio, but Don knows that. And I hear calls getting answered, and that means a lot, because that will save lives, it's very important. To the community, we need the community in this room, as tonight, there's very few seats, and I think they were all filled earlier. Community needs to be here, they need to know what's going on, they need to know how the heart of this county is beating, and I think it's beating well. the heart of this county is beating, and I think it's beating well. And I look forward to continuing working with everyone.
All right.
Keep it short and sweet tonight, cause it's been a long meeting.
Are you telling me too? No. Cause I was fixing to say, I can't, I can't, you know, add much to what y'all have said, that's all good stuff, so.
No, it's.
I'll echo everything they said. Um, thank you to all of the staff, employees and and their crews, doing an amazing job. Um, glad to see the room full too. Don, um, you have brought this department, that department a long ways in the, I say relatively short time, cause you had a much longer career before you've had this career. But uh, you you've made huge strides in what we were then and what we are now. Um, you got a heck of a team, we have a heck of a team because of it. Um, you've done so much for them, you will um, leave Jones County much better than when you got here. And uh, we thank you for that and uh, I know we'll see more of you before you go, but I just, in case you weren't in the next meeting, I wanted to make sure you knew that, that we very much appreciate everything you've brought to us, given to us and done for us.
Thank you, Senator.
All right. And uh, the reason Wendy said it was raining, I don't understand that, but it quit raining at like eight-thirty and she said nine o'clock, I mean, we, I was calling her at nine to wake her up, but.
My phone was in my truck, thank you.
So, did, did you have more bags than she?
Oh, way more than that, I had to go to the car twice.
Yeah, but did you bring them to Carol's Park and put them in the purple roll-off?
Why would I?
You didn't win then.
Well, they were counted. They, we won, no worry about that.
Peewee, did you witness any of his trash?
That's right.
Tell her, Peewee.
That's right, but you saw them all on my truck, didn't you, when I brought those tires? Ah, ha, ha.
You're a photographer, you get pictures?
Uh-uh, I make emotion to a germ.
Second, second.
All right.